It had the same siding on a grand state address since we moved in there 40 years ago.
She lives like three houses down.
She has a slush bed.
It's not wood. They hover off and I'm not a fan of siding. I've never sided right.
Well, I will forget it otherwise.
It's someone's birthday.
Oh, yes.
That's right.
Yes.
Hi, I'm Stacey.
Hi.
How are you?
Yeah, how are you?
Ron.
Oh, yeah. I would like to call this meeting of the Downcourt Public Library Board of Trustees to order. This Tuesday, April 16th, 2019. First item on the agenda is the consent agenda.
I move consent agenda.
A second.
Thank you, Philby. Have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? During the sitting done, a call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion to approve the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone oppose? Thank you. Motion period. Next item on the agenda is public with comment. Sitting and hearing no one for the public with comment. We'll move on. Friends. Don't see water here.
Yeah, I didn't hear that she wasn't coming, so I had in the direct report again a reminder that the Friends annual meeting will be Wednesday, April 24th at 5:30 across the hall here at Main. And there is a conference call update meeting for the Capitol Campaign Committee that's scheduled for this Thursday this week, so.
Friends annual meeting is here, April 24th. Is that what you said?
Yes.
Okay. 5:30?
Yep, 5:30 in the large meeting room across the hall. Do you know who I mean? Well, not pretty good.
You paid for it.
You paid for it, yeah.
I was like, oh, I missed that part.
Dinner available.
Yeah. I love being treated.
Okay, moving on. Next item on the agenda is community reports. Finance. Anything, Tom, for finance?
I looked through the budget recap. Overall, it looks pretty good. I mean, there were a few items that exceeded our expense, our percentage of the year, but that's to be expected. So it didn't look like it was anything out of line.
Thank you. Chris Mel, Med, anything for Chris Mel?
No, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Now, Lita, anything for a little advocacy?
Oh, just two things to share with you all. I tried seeing the movie public if it's come down here because I think Ryan Dowd was there to, you know, help us through our library's employee program. I forget. Yes, thank you. Thank you, Lina. So this is an absolutely beautiful movie that, you know, if we all have time and if we can go together, it would be fun, but it doesn't seem to be coming here for some reason at Cinemax. It would be worthwhile for us to see.
Even in contact with them?
No, they've been doing special little things, but they're doing in big, big cities like, you know, Chicago and all those places.
Good, because I've been to some big cities lately. I haven't been where I can be.
No, like, you know, they showed it in Cleveland and all the others like ACRL and LA, but places. So I'm trying to see if I, you know, can get connected with anybody, but I tried seeing our theaters here. They don't seem to be. So I just thought maybe if we all can go together, it would really be absolutely wonderful. That was one. We are going to go as, I mean, I will share an email, but I think it's May 4th, which is a Saturday, May 4th, Saturday, is again delivering a food backpack, and I'll send an email, food backpack, so if we have time and if we could go. And now I thought summer reading program is coming close as well, so it would be, you know, kind of good to have that. So that was one. And just to share with you all, Dress for Success is having a program coming up this Thursday, and they would like in the future, I think Pam, I don't know her full name, but Pam is their PR contact who would like to talk to library and how we can all work together because, you know, they provide the outfit and, you know, all the interview materials that their clients need. We have our library with, you know, computers and other resources that we give, so. But that's going to happen sometime later next month, and I'll let you know as I get to meet her. That is all that I had to share.
I want to just add one thing. I add off the ship appropriately, but there is this book called The Library, and I don't know if anybody's read it. It's a completely fascinating book about the LA Public Library that burned down in the 1980s, and it's just, it's a really amazing reading. I don't read a lot of nonfiction, but I would recommend it. It just gets you in the, just how much people love libraries and depend on them and what a community organizing thing it is and how they deal with their homelessness there and, you know, because they have a lot, but they just made it more welcoming. But anyway, I just recommend that book. Now, don't try getting it from the library because it's too hard. I got it from Overdrive, and I think I got it for one week, and like they didn't even warn me. They're like, gone. I'm like, but wait, wait, wait. I could have read it more. And then I turned to find this in all the other libraries.
Undo, undo.
Undo. Wait, I know something, and now I'm 14th on the list.
14th.
I got way to the back of the line now.
Is this a branded book or something like high demand?
Um, it is.
Yeah. It's one of those sleeper bestsellers.
Yeah. Yeah. It's by the woman who wrote The Orchid Thief. You may know that book.
Susan Orlean type of thing.
Yeah, Susan Orlean, yeah. Yeah, but it would be a fun book to even have a book discussion around just because it's sort of inherent soul of libraries, you know, and they're, they're different and yet they're the same, you know, so.
And I believe there's a movie, right, have been purchased for that book.
Really?
Yes, so there's a movie to come, I believe. It's, I sort of, yeah.
And I don't know, it just made me think because like with Notre Dame burning down and what that was like, and it describes the librarians and, oh my God, it's like, oh, no, I just, it's sort of an advocacy thing.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, direct report, any?
So just a few things. I noticed that we've requested an estimate from Leggett for completing the plans, the renovation plans so that we would be ready to go for bid when we have our funding assembled. I want to have that reviewed by the city project manager as well to make sure that proposal covers everything we're going to need, that they think it's a reasonable amount to pay for those kinds of services based on their experience with other similar projects. So if we get all that strained out and we want to get it approved prior to the next regular trustee meeting, we might, if we find there's some sense of urgency, we might ask you to vote via the virtual meeting or quick phone or something like that. But right now, I don't see any huge urgency with it, but I think we want to be ready, and there are some grant opportunities for us that we need to have bids for and a vendor selected before they will fund and we can apply for the grant. So that's why we're taking a look at that. So I mentioned that we're working to finalize details about becoming an AmeriCorps site. That would give us three positions. So one, a 900-hour contract position that runs mostly, most of the year, then doing assigned to outreach, and then an additional 300-hour position strictly for summer outreach, actually that we do with summer school and some of those kinds of things, and then a 450-hour a week position that would, right now, we're thinking would assign to the services department and really be at Fairmont to be a resource with the great influx of young people from the neighborhood. They're using the library after school. We're figuring that we will have quite an influx over the summer, and we just need to have some extra activities for them to do, so we want to use the computer lab and turn it into a bit of a temporary maker area for the kids and then have a staff member, AmeriCorps staff member there to work with them.
That's so great. Yeah, it's just like during the month.
Yeah, so hopefully that will provide, you know, some activities for the kids to do. A lot of the times, we found that they would come to the meal site and then they would stay the rest of the afternoon, so this will give us some kind of passive activities for them to take advantage of. So that's what we plan to do with that. The side letter that the board approved last time for the change, for the union contract, if you remember, so that for when we promoted people from 20-hour a week positions to 25-hour a week position, we wouldn't have to wait for that trial period. So that was presented to the union at our last labor management meeting. We're waiting to hear back from them in terms of scheduling a vote with their membership. If you're curious, we've been getting the word out regarding having our juvenile items being fine free, and I asked staff if they had had any comments from folks, and one staff member replied that she had, one time she had a parent came up to pay for fines after returning several items on a sorter, and when there weren't any fines on their account, I asked if they'd been juvenile items. They said they were, and they were very happy to hear they're now fined free. Another time, a parent was admonishing a child about remembering to keep track of the books so it could be returned on time and said, no more fines. When I told her about juvenile items now being fined free, she was very happy, as was her daughter.
Saved them from family counseling.
Right, so they said that they had lots of smiles as they did now. So and then just kind of an FYI, because I'm not sure where this will take us, but with our partnership with Downcourt Reads, with the Downcourt Schools, and knowing some of the financial challenges that they're facing, we're not really sure, they're not really sure if all the current teacher librarian positions are going to be filled, what the cuts facing the schools will mean for library services at the schools. So we are going to have some conversation with their community outreach or community partnership staff member to see if there are things that the library could do to kind of help them over the hump. So we do not believe in any way, shape, or form that the library can and should replace the function of teacher librarians in the schools. I mean, the presence of strong libraries in the schools is really an indicator of academic success for students, so we're not, so that is not anything we're interested in doing currently. But in terms of doing some extra effort for deposit collections during a time period when there might not be as many resources to purchase materials, some of those kinds of things, we thought it would be certainly worthwhile to have conversation with them about things like that, and so just to let you know that we'll be looking at some of those things, and clearly anything that we would be looking at doing, we would need trustee approval.
So deposit collection is putting books in the school libraries?
Right, so say, you know, we've got, you know, we could rotate between the variety of schools, you know, 50 or 60 items and be able to, you know, deliver and then take back, you know, every month or whatever. The outreach vehicle will hopefully make that a little bit easier to do things like that. And, you know, again, we need to find out what the schools think and what the impact is going to be. I think they're a little up in the air with that right now, but it seemed like it was worth having conversation because it seems like while budgets are going to continue to be tight, but the next two, three years is really where it's going to be more difficult. And so if we can kind of help bridge a gap for students in terms of access to reading materials, that that might be something we would want to do.
Good stuff.
Thank you for being proactive on that.
Okay, any questions, comments on the directors or something? New business, first item, discussion of job description for library trustee. Information in the packet about that.
This is something that we have in the strategic plan to make sure that when we find ourselves needing to recruit new trustees, that we can be clear about what's expected and help us recruit folks who are interested in meeting some of the other requirements so that we're just, I'd say, just being a little bit more there. It's a very rough draft, looking for any sorts of comments or suggestions that folks might have.
Well, I understand that one of the major duties of a trustee is the actual hiring and/or firing of the director, and then also, I think, like fiscal fiduciary responsibility as well. I mean, I see that as our two main things that we do. And then I don't think we just provide input to the evaluation of the library director. We do it. We might gather input, but we are responsible for doing that. Yes, as I understand.
Correct.
We don't just provide input.
But some, I guess I was kind of going with personnel committee puts the evaluation together, but all trustees are expected to provide input to that process?
The personnel committee is part of the trustee.
Yeah, and so the overall responsibility is of the board, and then it's like we have this committee that's going to do this, you know, kind of legwork or whatever, and we've also changed, I mean, now we very much want to have the board. I mean, I think we're going to do this as like a committee of the whole house, I understand it, right? We're going to be evaluation.
Evaluation, yes.
Yeah. So it's the board's responsibility to make sure that gets done.
So if we change that to conduct annual evaluation of library work?
Do you maybe also add something about serving on, there's, you have committees from what I've seen, so is that a requirement that, okay. We, as, as ask or ask something about serving on committees?
We changed that. We used to have standing committees and everybody was on one or two committees, and now we realize that some of them just didn't meet and they were ineffective, so we narrowed it. But yes, the willingness to.
So if we say serve on more committees?
And task forces.
Whatever it is. As ask, as beg by Amy. Yeah, really, it's Steve. Steve's in charge of that. And then I think we should add something like when your term's over, you have to leave. Sorry, I just.
Also, you can be reappointed.
Well, after, yes, but then 12 years, you need to go away. Right, 12 years is plenty long. Don't you think?
Yes.
I do think though, but your comment about fiduciary responsibility, I mean, we are one of the few boards of the city that actually has some ability to affect our own finances. So I think that part of it has to be.
Yeah, it has to be lined out there.
It's not like we have total control, but we do have some, more control than a lot of boards and commissions.
Well, and I mean, I think more than that is we have a responsibility to do that.
So as a, so as a board, then you would review the annual budget, I mean, you get into the operation, not, you don't do the operation, but you do things like that as well?
Well, I would say that function, I don't know, maybe I'm wrong. But functionally, I think Amy tells us, it says how much money we need for books, and no one on the board is going to say, no, I think we need two more dollars. We don't do that. But I think if something were, you know, like there were some red flag there or something that, you know, we thought, well, we haven't accounted for this, or wait, why did the city take our money away? That gets the board members pretty rattled when that.
When and if that's happened.
It has. The one thing that we have, that we do have more control over than anything is the library levy because it was voted by citizens, and so therefore, we as a library board have more control over that.
Yes. How it's used or how it's approved or, okay, that's an important duty.
Yes, it's an important duty.
It has to be used to support the library. It's just, we have some control over how it's used.
Okay, I'll.
Referring to the trustee's handbook, there are some items that are listed as responsible, and I should throw these out, but, and someone more carried in here already. They are prepare for and attend all meetings, take an active part in discussions, but not dominate or get the board off track.
What's that thing about the library? Did I do that?
Use parliamentary procedure and abide by any state laws that apply to your meetings. Practice the arts of listening and compromise. Work towards consensus on issues. Focus deliberations on the mission of the library and the best interests of those you serve, and publicly support the board decisions.
This is something similar, Steve, to what you said. I was reading through the State of Iowa library's website for trustees, and then I think this is Nebraska Public Library qualifications for a trustee. That's what they put. And I started thinking when I joined all of you, I mean, I didn't know how to join in, and came to know later. And this, and I'll share this online, but it talked about just how you have jobs advertised. It's like, job, what are the qualifications? What are the expectations? So, you know, for someone who's absolutely seen of being a library trustee, I found this to be, you know, kind of a clear cut thing that, okay, I'm expected to do this, I'm expected to know that. So just as a link if you all would like to see. I felt that to be a clear cut disposition that this is what is expected.
And I guess once we finalize this, I would suggest that we send a copy of it to the mayor to put in whatever file. I've seen them pull out a file, look and see who they've got in there that they're thinking about, you know, or that's asked. Because as far as qualifications, I mean, that's the person really is going to make that decision.
Yep, absolutely. And I might, this may seem very picky, but I would maybe want to change from trustee duties to trustee responsibility. That just sounds a little more.
Duty, it's a duty.
Some of us are retarded. You know, like, I don't actually. Thank you, but no.
Okay, so we'll take this and make some of the changes suggested.
So some of the things he said could sort of be folded into, I mean, the replacing some of these or keeping some of these and, you know, cross-pollinate, is that what you're thinking?
Yes. I'll just throw them out there.
Or you could also say refer to, refer to that.
Yeah, and it's actually, I'll go back to the state library for, to the accreditation requirements because there are some specific things that the board needs to do in order to meet our accreditation as well.
Yeah, that's good.
That really is to.
Any other questions, comments, suggestions? Moving on. Second item under new business, discussion of board's procedure regarding patron appeals to the board.
Again, this is kind of from our last meeting where we had a library pageant come and speak to the board, and afterwards, you know, it really, we really don't have a procedure for how the board would handle an appeal of any kind, whether it's for reconsideration of library materials in the collection or for being barred from library services for a certain period of time, or whatever the situation might be. There just isn't, there's not a process written for the board, so we thought that it would be a good idea to have a process. It is general enough, hopefully, that it can cover a variety of situations, but.
I thought about that last time when we had this, what are we supposed to do? It was kind of like left hanging, so. I had one thought, and I don't know if I'm right about this or not, so I may be off-base. It may be that someone making an appeal might assume privacy or, you know, and I would assume that all meetings of the trustees would be public, you know, potentially public and would have to be posted. If you have to follow all those rules for it, maybe a note that says, and you may not, so I may be wrong, perhaps a note in the policy that all board trustees regular or special meetings, which would be, right, a special meeting, right, are open to the public and must be posted X number of days in advance. And then, just so if someone has an expectation, they're on blind sighted. We know that, but that people coming in might not, so it might just be a good thing so that then they're like, well, you, this was. And that may never, it may never, it may make no difference, but maybe something that would be a good, you know, might be something to add if this.
Because it wouldn't affect everyone.
Yeah, right. I might also say how the board secretary would notify all parties, whether it's in writing or via email or whatever, and the appeal meeting within X number of weeks, or maybe something that says, okay, we're going to do this. So nobody can nail you on the policy or nail, try to nail the board like, well, you didn't say when and blah, 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 you know. So something that maybe has a few more specifics so that everybody understands the ground holes.
They can't accuse you of being delaying delivery.
Exactly, exactly, yeah, yeah, exactly. They may expect you to do it the next day, you know, and why you didn't do it right away? So that way, I think protects, it gives you a reasonable time and.
Are there other things that would happen that would be needing to be more timely and addressed more quickly than our next board meeting?
I don't know, but I think what we need to like talk about this right away, this person, I don't know. The hypothetical, you know. We had it written, because I was saying that the board executive committee, which is the officers, would need to hear that, and that's not a meeting that has full quorum, so we wouldn't have to record the meeting and things like that, and that way, then the executive committee, if it's a, if it's a decision that needs full board action, then the executive committee could recommend that to the board at the next meeting, just recommend a resolution, or it was something that didn't require full board action. And some things would and some wouldn't, I think, then we can simply notify the patron of the decision that's made and just kind of move on from there.
Should this be brought by civic legal? I mean, just to make sure, for example, the issues of open meetings, all those kinds of things are addressed properly. I don't want to see this turn into an 18-page.
Right.
Which typically is what lawyers sue.
It's got to be one page.
Well, your impressions are the only one. Just this morning, going through some audit programs, and typically every time you get the new programs, they get longer. Because the candidates do the same thing. We put them more crapping.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. I know. It's like no responsibility.
I think open meeting laws is probably the one we really want to make sure that there is a problem with that because in terms of policy and enforcement of the board, the already established board policies, that's something that the code gives authority to the board of trustees, so.
I looked at the open meetings law, and the, I mean, basically, all meetings, all of our meetings are open to the public unless there is a, an exemption, and there's about seven or eight of those, and I couldn't find one that would apply to, to a situation like an appeal to the board. The closest one I could find would be like an evaluation, like Amy's evaluation, but then it specifically says professional, and so, and you know, and I don't, would not claim to be the last word on that, but I did look at that. The other thing I wondered about was if we have a smaller group hear an appeal, and this kind of goes to Tom's question about having somebody legal look at it, would there be a possibility, or should we provide for the possibility that someone would appeal to the full board? The thing that jumps into my head is like even appeals courts, you know, they're usually heard by a panel of judges, but then that can be appealed in some instances. heard by a panel of judges, but then that can be appealed in some instances, maybe it's in some jurisdictions to the full, the full court, I guess. Just so we, no, don't get blindsided ourselves by that. But I think that would be a good way to do it. It would offer the opportunity, that is, having the executive committee hear those things, would offer the opportunity to have a meeting where perhaps there's some situation that wouldn't be publicly aired, not that it would be something regarding the specific appeal, but maybe something about the person or whatever that, you know, maybe they don't want to be on camera. They have an appeal, but they don't want to be available to the whole world.
Yeah, I mean, there are plenty, I think, of those situations where, and mostly it would involve a patron being barred from library service for a particular point in time. But, you know, sometimes that's an issue with juveniles, and then a parent might be in talking about that, and we would then be sharing information about that juvenile's behavior. And so, some of that, I think, we don't want to have.
And so if they were to appeal to the full board, then that would be part of it, that it's going to be a public meeting.
Correct.
Right. Yeah, and I don't know the rules, but like an appeals process.
But you could, could we, could we have the option of making it not public?
Not for the full board.
We could, we could.
Not, I mean, it could be an exception.
Unless, 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 you know, legal counsel were to say, yeah, there is a summary exclusion that would apply to that. I didn't read through them in detail, but just.
The conden terms.
But I think that's at least one question we ought to look at.
Because you do deal with juveniles.
Yeah, that's another good point, yes, and you mentioned it.
Is that one of the exceptions in the, in the rules that you have already? That is, being juveniles, that's interesting.
There is.
Okay.
And I, I only know that from being on the school board, but, but student expulsion hearings could be, I don't remember the specific exemption, but I do recall seeing one, but yes, there is a specific one to discuss whether to conduct a hearing or to conduct hearings to suspend or expel a student unless an open session is requested by the student. So I don't think that, that wouldn't apply in this case, but maybe some of that, maybe that language is something to think about, because the person may say, no, I want to have a public meeting.
Okay. Push that out a little bit more, and.
Yeah, yeah. One more thing just to think about is what you've drawn up talks about time that there would be to present things. And I think it's good that it spells out that both the administration and the patron would have time to present their position. But then I was just wondering if they should, if we had to put something in there for time for rebuttal. I mean, if somebody brought something up in their argument, the other side wanted to, you know, say, no, that's, I don't agree with that, or something, just.
Okay. We'll have that in.
Anything more on board procedure regarding patron appeals to the board? Excited about the agenda this training?
Setting up for the Grow Google program that's. They bring in all their own equipment and everything, we like table chairs.
Wow. Heard your presence, you look around.
Okay, well, I wanted to take the opportunity to present some of what the staff learned during the staff in service. So this will also give you an idea of the approach that, that we're taking in, in working with not just patrons experiencing homelessness, but as you see as we go through this, the techniques that they talk about are really, they're just simply good customer service, I think is kind of bottom line with that. So, so really, the goals were to help the staff understand that they have the ability to influence the outcome of encounters with patrons. And sometimes the staff, I think, struggles with that, that they, they're more reactive and they don't understand that, you know, there really are tools that they can use to get a good outcome, you know, 99% of the time in dealing with patron situations, no matter what that situation is. And we're also looking at, you know, ways where we can be a more inclusive organization, more welcoming to everybody, and still meet the goals of our library, which are to be welcoming, inclusive, safe, and productive. So we want people to be able to be productive when they're here, we want it to be safe for everybody, and inclusive at the same time, because I think sometimes staff and even some of our patrons equate being safe to not having homeless patrons around. So, so we want to make sure that everybody understands that having patrons experiencing homelessness in the library does not make the library unsafe, so. They spent quite a lot of time talking with staff about how are homeless individuals different from all the rest of us? So, and I found it really, really kind of, you know, eye-opening to me when they, what they were talking about as well. So generally, they grew up poor. Generally, they have a different communication style. And that chart, I think, was really important for staff to understand that somebody who is experiencing homelessness and grew up in poverty, their reaction to a library staff member telling them or asking them to take their feet off the furniture, or letting them know that they need to be awake, or letting them know that there's a fine on their account, their reaction is, is their voice goes up right away, because that's how they've been taught to communicate in the environment that they were raised in. Whereas those of us who have had more opportunity and perhaps been raised differently, our voice stays pretty darn stable in terms of tone until we're really, really angry. So therefore, what the staff hears is they hear, you know, they tell somebody that they've got a fine and that something needs to be cleared from their account before they can check out, and immediately, the patron's voice goes up. The patron isn't really that angry, that's just how they react to that, but then this, but the staff member immediately feels like they're being yelled at, and that the patron is, you know, kind of getting out of control, when they're not there yet. So, so that was one thing that I think was important for our staff to understand, and hopefully, they're kind of looking at that. And as I heard this, I could go back actually to a patron that I dealt with who had that exact situation happen, and she was in, you know, full yelling argument mode immediately. But because that, she, I think, had just had to fight for everything she got in her life, and that's how, therefore, she reacted, because she was so used to having to fight for every dang thing that she ever got. So, so that voice went up right away. And then when we had a chance to have some conversation, it really wasn't that big of a thing. So, and we were able to resolve it.
And can I just ask, we did this training?
So this was done by a man named Joe Dutra. He is an authorized trainer for a gentleman who wrote the Homeless Librarian book that is out right now, and he's the person who's been going along with and consulted with the movie, The Library. So he runs a homeless shelter called Hudson House on Osgood Street, Chicago. Really, I mean, they grew up for, actually, a large majority of people who are in poverty and homeless are veterans who did not necessarily grow up. I mean, yeah, just.
So that, I mean, it seems more fair to.
So we'll push that out a little bit, because that's one of the statistics that's a little bit shocking to people. And he emphasized that folks experiencing homelessness have different life experiences. They've had more trauma, which goes back to, you know, veterans, they've experienced more violence and danger, and they've experienced more punishment. They look at time differently, because their immediate concern is what's going to happen in the next 12 hours, 20 hours, 24 hours. Where am I going to get my next meal?
Where am I going to sleep?
Where am I going to sleep tonight? So that is something very different. So as we look at, quote, punishment for not adhering to library behavior policy, being asked to leave for a day or being asked to leave for six months doesn't make any difference, because they can't, they don't look out six months, because that's, that's not what their concern is. They look at respect differently as well, and then, just generalizing, we often, so a figure and authority, we give them that authority. So Marion's elected council member, we give her the authority and respect as an elected council member. Whereas somebody who's experiencing homelessness would make her earn that respect and authority, the same in terms of dealing with any authority figure, whether it's a teacher or the library staff or whoever. So we need to, as library staff members, have our first encounters with everybody be something where we're helping to build that respect between, as opposed to assuming that we are going to be respected because we're libraries.
So, so if you leave, in the interaction, if you leave with respect, you're more likely to earn it.
Yeah.
Correct.
That's how you earn it.
Correct. Yeah.
Not based on position.
Right.
Exactly.
Right. And then that we also, that they also have, you know, different triggers in terms of, you know, uninvited touch, differential treatment, that they're very tuned to unfairness. So if there are rules, they need to be applied across the board, because they've been singled out for so much unfair treatment just over the course of their lives, because one of the examples they gave was, you know, when was the last time you were arrested for loitering in a park, for sitting in a park? Well, homeless people, that happens too quite often. What about jaywalking? What about all these other things? If you're at a party and you're walking down the street and you're perhaps a little publicly intoxicated, your chances of being arrested for that are not very good, but if you're experiencing homelessness, your chances of getting arrested for that are much higher. So, and then, people who enjoy their misfortune. So this was kind of a surprising statistic to me, and I can't remember the exact number, was very high number, like, 1 in 10, you know. Folks are kind of what they call everyday sadists, you know, so they, you know, they come across as being nice, but, you know, in reality, they're kind of, you know, they're kind of enjoying somebody else's misfortune. And they said that they could, again, people who are experiencing homelessness can really pick up on that.
It's called schadenfreude, that's what the German word for it is. It's an actual word, taking joy in other people's misery.
Yes.
Yeah, that's, yeah, it's the real deal. Wow.
So then they talked about, you know, so given all these things, what's the problem with punishment? Which is basically that homeless individuals are immune to punishment, and it often has the opposite effect. So we're trying to get, we still want to get compliance with behavior policy, because we're trying to provide an environment that is welcoming, inclusive, safe, and productive. So how do we go about doing that? So then they started talking about ways to get voluntary compliance. So, and then how, so lowering the level of conflict and then getting people to comply with you. So people are more likely to voluntarily comply if you do five nice things before you ask them to change their behavior. And those five nice things can simply be, hi, my name's Amy, what's your name? How are you today? Are you finding what you need here at the library? Oh, could you do me a favor and take your feet off the furniture? I mean, that, those kinds of interactions as opposed to going up and saying, you need to get your feet off the furniture. So if people like you, they're more likely to voluntarily comply. So how do you do that? You show that you like them. So, and you do that first, and that's not always something we like to do. We don't always like to take the first step. So, but, so their, their advice and what really, you be nice first.
But it sounds like you're kind of making that your staff's job now, to be nice, to, I mean.
Well, it's always been their job to be nice.
No, but I mean, but I mean, you're, you're changing the expectation to say, and this is also how you have to be nice.
Right.
Because I think people exclude homeless people. I'll do this for you all, middle class people, but then over, and yours explained that too, over here, then, oh, I, yeah, I don't need to, I don't need to do that.
Right.
And so you're, I think you're, by having this training, you're, you are changing the expectation of your staff.
Yeah.
That, you know.
Well, again.
Or making it clear.
This is all good customer.
Making it clear.
Yeah. You know, so we should be greeting every patron who comes in that way. And, you know, it's not just folks experiencing homelessness who put their feet on the furniture, ooh, who might fall asleep at the library.
No, but who's the first person that gets to ask to get their feet down?
So we need to make sure that we're approaching everybody the same way. And then, again, well, that's the same thing. So people are more likely to comply if they view it as legitimate, and that they feel that they're going to be listened to, the rules are predictable, and that the rule enforcer is fair, so that we're applying the rules, the same rules to everyone. So what he was really talking about, so his, the term he uses for that is empathy-driven enforcement versus punishment-driven. So that's really what we're emphasizing with staff now, is the empathy-driven customer service. So, so punishment-driven enforcement, speeding, enforcing tickets, giving credit, all those kinds of things. And why doesn't it work? Who does it really not work for? People with mental illness, people who are intoxicated or high, people who are habituated to punishment, people who have a shortened time horizon, are highly traumatized, and are emotionally overwhelmed. So who are we describing? We're describing folks who are potentially experiencing homelessness. Not only, but potentially. So some of the pre-conflict tools that they gave us were to, don't take or make anything personal, ever. So just don't take it personally, because then you lose control of the situation, because now your ego is wrapped up in it, as opposed to simply trying to solve the problem, because that's your goal, is to solve the problem, so that the library can be welcoming, inclusive, safe, and productive. That cup of pennies, that refers back to the five, five positive interactions for every one negative interaction, that was just kind of a method he, he gave us for kind of thinking about that, you know. So every time you do something nice for someone, it's like getting five pennies in the cup, or putting a penny in the cup. When you enforce or ask for compliance with behavior policy, you have to take five out. And you want to keep a positive number in there in terms of your, your interactions with that patron. So just kind of a good way to, to think of that. To use people's names, try to learn names and use those names. Small talk, you know, you can tell if you're paying attention, you can tell if somebody wants to engage in small talk or not. So if they don't want to, then you can cut it off, but that might be the only nice conversation that, that somebody has during the course of a day. So, and that's not just, again, that's not just patrons experiencing homelessness, but a lot of our senior citizen patrons, they, you know, we used to have a woman who called special collections pretty much every morning. She lived alone, she was a widow, she was elderly, she couldn't get out very much anymore. And it was pretty much like clockwork, and you could tell, well, she'd had a cup of coffee, she'd read the paper, and now she needed someone to talk to for just five minutes. She'd call, so she'd call, and she had a genealogy question, you know, almost every morning.
How long did that go on?
Years. So, and then to greet everyone as they come in, you know, be the Walmart greeter. So let people know that they're welcome in the building, and chicken hands, yeah. And just generally be welcoming. So the non-verbal escalation tools that they emphasize were, don't back away or move forward in an aggressive manner. So that seems pretty obvious, but, you know, if there's an emergency going on, or you hear somebody shouting.
The escalation tools, actually, right. Wouldn't it be?
Well, this would be when, this would be when the situation's escalating, I guess.
Okay, okay.
But you're right, you're to the right. So you hear something loud going on, maybe because somebody's voice, you know, raised, don't go running towards that situation. If you got to run the first dirty feet to get there, you know, walk the last hand, so that when they see you, you're walking towards them calmly. Stand at an angle to the patron, so that way you're not. Directly confronting, you're not in their face, you're giving. in their face, you're giving somebody kind of a way out. It's safer for you as well. You can put a barrier of some sort between you and the patron if you can do it gracefully, you know, so.
Like don't pick up a chair.
Like a service desk, you know, something like that.
Thank you.
So you want to make sure that your hands are, are visible. So what do you do with your hands? So they, he's, he recommended, so talking with your hands is a good solution. Because that way they're there, you don't want them in your pockets because if you need, if somebody does get violent, that's not a good place to have them. But, um, so talking with your hands is a good solution. Move to a less public space so you remove the audience. So that way you don't feel like you've got to save face in front of the rest of the library and the patron doesn't feel that they have to save face in front of all of their, their friends and everybody who's watching. So that just gets that off that public space, which is not to say we're going to move into a really private room, um, because that's not a great idea here, but we can find less private places to have those discussions. Making eye contact, not staring, but you know, make eye contact, look away a little bit, make eye contact again. Smile, not the whole time when somebody's arguing with you because that becomes another kind of issue. Like you're not taking me seriously. But if you're going into the situation new and you're to help try to resolve an issue, then certainly walking out, smiling, introducing yourself, asking somebody their name, and then asking them what they, what you can do to help them with the situation would be a way to go with that. Shake hands, but again, otherwise don't touch the patron. So, um, for verbal escalation, as arguments are escalating, remember that we have an influence on patron behavior. So talk more quietly than they do. People will automatically lower their tone of voice. Know our goal, the goal is not to win, the goal is to get compliance with library behavior policy. So we don't have to personally win and take ego out of it. We don't judge. Be calmer than the patron, be respectful. So we go first in being nice and listening. Slow down, take time to listen to the patron so that you can deal with the issue effectively the first time as opposed to having something escalate because we're not taking time to do it and then we having to backtrack and try all over again. Be sad, so feel free to apologize for enforcing the rules while you do enforce the rules. I'm really sorry, but because of this, this needs to happen. Blame the rules. They said, absolutely, go ahead and blame the rules.
That mean old Amy made me do this.
Yep, absolutely. And I told the staff that, I said, feel free, say, you know, the library director really frowns on, that's okay. You know, if I need to, I would say the library board really frowns. There's always someone else and if it solves the situation.
City council.
If it solves the situation in the time, then that's what you're trying to do. And that puts you on the same side of the person that you're talking with. You know, like, well, I really hate to do this, but I have to because of this, you know, because it's the role, because the director says I have to, because the board says that this is how we have to do this. But it puts you on the same side as the patron that you're talking to.
And also the devil made me do this.
Right, the comment on me, absolutely. And then to switch out staff if you need to. So if you're just not getting anywhere and it's clearly this isn't working, feel free to get another staff member in there. That can just change the conversation. So, and then they gave us tips for kicking someone out of the library with empathy. So, again, so take a minute to listen, make it clear you don't think that this, the person is a bad person, that it's a specific behavior that you're, you're looking at. Offer a fresh start the next time they come in, no harm, no foul, we'll be happy to welcome you back in tomorrow as long as you're sober kind of thing. Be sad when you do it, you know, again, don't be that person who's taking joy in kicking somebody out of the library. And then take baby steps. So just ask the person to leave in small steps. Could you gather up your belongings? Let's walk to the front door. So just do it in, in, in those kind of small baby steps. So that was a, so this is kind of a brief summary of what we spent three hours learning. So, um, but I, we have had some occasion where we've had some incident reports where the staff has reported that they used the tools. So, um, so I think, I think this app got a lot out of it and we seem to enjoy it. We've looked at some changes in our policy in terms of our, I shouldn't say policy, in our procedure, because it's not a board policy, in terms of, um, time period for if a patron is barred from library service. So we never used to do a week, so we're going to start with a week and then go to a month and then six months if we have to for ongoing serious kinds of problems. And for juveniles, we decide it's never longer than a week, is that true?
It can go to a week and a month.
A week and a month, but for juvenile, never longer than that because juveniles also don't have that sense of a long time horizon. It just doesn't mean anything to them. So, um, so that seemed really kind of count productive as well. So we have made, um, some changes already based on, on what we've been.
This is, a lot of stuff is just getting along in life, you know? You don't have to be homeless, just like, oh, I should think about that more, you know?
I mean, really, there are, I mean, there certainly are, you know, having gone through a lot of training, working with people in poverty, you know, there's just things we assume about our middle-class lives, you know, that, I mean, like, for example, I work at, at Cafe Unbind, you know, we provide meals there. And I remember one time when I was very new to being so put out by this guy who's like, what's in that? And voice raised, what's in that? Is that like a leftover or like, and he was like, and I was, I was so put out. And then I was like, you know, middle-class people ask all the time what's in their food. Like, what's the problem here? And it was just an aha moment for me because, and I think I'm experienced, but we default to that, you know? And I, I remember we were talking about people like that were loitering out in the front, loitering, let's use that word. And, and when there was a board member who said, we should just call the police every time they're out there. And I just, I was like, oh my God, can we beat up on, could we beat up on poor people more? I mean, you know, so there is that, you know? And so it's just, it's an awareness and it's really a learning curve too.
Yeah.
And, and really coaching and helping the staff to make better decisions and choices. None of them will be totally good at this.
Oh, and they were.
No, they're, they won't be. And so be really, you know, helpful to them to work through that because it's, it's hard.
And one thing that he did emphasize was, so you, it's like anything that you want to practice, right? Because you want to be able to do it in a crisis. Like when you practice first aid, you practice CPR on a resuscitation dummy. Right. So you want to practice these techniques all the time. You want to use them all the time and that way you know them when you need them.
With all patrons.
Yeah, but again, it's just simply good customer service.
Right. Because I think the same thing also happens sometimes to the elderly, you know, like we make assumptions about people who are older in public spaces that we wouldn't make about someone who was 35, you know? So it, it's kind of all very impersonal of the same thing.
Yeah.
I'm curious about something, and yeah, this is really amazing training. So who, who, at what level does, can someone make a decision to kick someone out, you know, to say you have to leave, you know, to say you have to leave? Can that be anybody in the library? Do they have to go to a supervisor?
No, it can be anybody.
It can be anybody.
Yeah, you're empowering them to do that.
To, to what you shared with us, Amy? The little trailer that I've been seeing of the movie Public, which this gentleman has helped them as a consultant, it really flashed a 10-minute trailer and, you know, it has similar situations that you shared. And the same gentleman ran, I think, down, the one who's written that book, homelessness, I think he's a lawyer and as you mentioned, Chicago, he has a listserv which is free. And after you had shared that, I kind of signed up on his listserv and it comes as an email as tips, tips in a sense, you know, quickly you could say. And, and there are, as you rightly also pointed out, there are so many situations that I need to learn. I don't look after public, my clientele is students, but I have student workers who may behave sometimes in a way that I need to have my temper down or whatever, you know? So that was really helpful, that way to, so that listserv is free, anyone can, you know, sign up and it comes to your mailbox.
Like once a week he sends out a tip.
Did you think the staff, and I don't mean in the training, but kind of later in the meeting after the meeting and the vibes among the staff and you probably can answer that better generally. You know, like how are they reacting to this?
I think it's been.
As a help or?
I think it's been mixed. I think some really see it as a help. There, we still have, we still struggle with staff who, who want somebody else to solve all those problems as opposed to them doing it. And, and so that's, I mean, and that's just something we're going to always continue to work through.
But that's kind of irrespective of homeless people, right?
That's just, that's the way.
Yeah. So, but I think, you know, we're totally guided and then just continue to emphasize that, that this is what we're, this, this is, this is the program. Everything you're enforcing is what we're doing and continue to train on it and continue to reinforce that.
But that has to be for them as well.
I was going to mention the, the switch staff. You wouldn't want to be the person who always switched. I mean, you know, you become the cop of the library and somebody passes it off to you every time, you know? It has to be sheer experience.
Yeah. Well, and the other thing that they recommended that I think was, um, was good would be that, so if it's really kind of a more difficult, touchy situation, then the staff member with more experience deals with it and then the staff member with less experience, you know, provides a little bit of backup but is kind of in the background just listening and learning from that interaction. If it's something that is perhaps not so complicated and, you know, so the person's upset, but they're not overly upset, then have the less experienced staff member take the lead on that and have the more experienced staff member back them up. So I'm not sure how we, how we put that into practice, but I thought that that was a good idea.
Do you do incident reports?
Oh, yes.
Okay, so at any level, if you, or is it at the level where people have to leave the library? Or is it every time somebody puts their foot on a chair?
No.
I'm trying to find out.
Yeah, it kind of goes, yeah. It kind of goes to if, if, if the staff thinks that a certain situation might repeat itself in the future, then they tend to do that so that staff will see that and they'll, and they'll kind of have some background. So.
Yeah.
Thank you. It's very interesting. And just a question on the staff enrollment day. This was in conjunction with the Moline Public Library staff, which helped cover the cost of the speaker, but how did that go? I mean, I assume there's, they have some, we have some, there's, there are friendships there and?
Yeah, I think, I think overall, staff enjoyed it. We, um, we sent out a survey, um, to our staff in terms of, you know, what did they think of the day in terms of the speaker, the location, the, you know, kind of the whole range.
Lunch.
Yeah. And, um, so that was, the last day that people could fill that out was yesterday. So Jennifer, correct?
I get to it.
Yeah. So, but I think overall was real positive, the responses we got back from Moline were that their staff really got a lot out of it and enjoyed it and enjoyed spending the day with us.
Just want to circle back on one thing about the discussion of the job description on library trustee. I think we should all know what the mission of the library is and I couldn't quote it myself, but one thing I'm going to ask Casey to do is to put the mission statement on the bottom of the agenda. Laura Guinness does that for the Friends and I think that's just another opportunity to see it and maybe over time even I'll remember.
Memory.
When that shows up or if that shows up, we'll, you know, you'll know where it came from. If there's nothing else.
I, I, one thing, I guess I should speak at the public thing. I just wanted to let, I don't know, there's other business. Anyway, um, this is just an FYI and the library is involved in this, but, um, as, you know, I'm involved as community outreach chair for the council, which is a, an evolving thing and what does it mean? And so that I'm doing that this year, but, but one of the things that we've decided to do is a series of, of events over the summer called Party in the Park, uh, which is where, that's a name from Iowa City. And we're going to try seven of these. And we're going to parks that are not the, it's not Leclerc, it's not Van de Beer. This is Slattery, it's Tyler, you know, it's Van Buren, so it's the smaller neighborhood parks. And there'll be seven of them. There'll be two each in June, July and August and one in September. And it'll be, you know, the city is, the staff will be there, the different departments, the library, I mean, has sent someone from the library and, and elected officials. And it's just really to bring staff to people rather than, you know, people try to deal with the city and it's often how do you get through all the bureaucracy, which, you know, cities are really good at. And so I just wanted to let you know about that. You know, it'll be just a fun couple of hours, you know, late at 5:30 to 7:30, something like that. So we're just talking about that now, so that's why you haven't heard anything, but we did have a meeting last week and, um, we had a representative from the library there. So, um, you know, hopefully it'll be fun and it just began a way for, um, people to find, get information about the city and the library, your programs, uh, you know, whatever. So it's very much in process right now, but I wanted to, to let you know about that.
And I hear that you're going to hopefully invite some of our QC Beats artists, musicians who are on that.
Yes, that's, and that's one, and I know that you had, um, that's Chad, I think Chad's working on that.
Okay.
So that's his, his area, but, um, yeah, and that would be, you know, we're going to have some music and we'll have food and, you know, you always have to, you know, people always have food. Food is good. So, um, anyway, yeah, and, and Chad had, again, this was something that Chad Dyson and our department director had, and I think you guys had talked about doing events in the parks anyway, so, which we found out after we were, she started talking, so I was like, oh, it's all coming together. So, um, in any case, you know, we're going to try to, you know, get the departments to think about fun and interactive things, not, you know, necessarily just sitting there with a clipboard. So we'll see, but we have to come, I think council needs to have a fun thing that we have to figure out too, so.
Okay.
So anyway, so.
Thank you, Marion. Appreciate it. Anything else come before this forum line? Is there a motion adjourned?
Motion adjourned.
Thank you, Tom.
Second.
Thank you, Judy. All the favor? Thank you. Anyone oppose?
No.
Motion carries. Meeting adjourned.
We go with the money for Donald.